Good college men and daughter. We'd like to welcome everyone to the regular meeting of the Jenkins Independent Board of Education. Today's date is August 26th, 2025. We'd like to start off with Mr. Johnson, Mr. Refrere. So I'll ask Mr. Baker to do that today. Put it up.
All right. Lord, we come to you to ask for the guidance and the wisdom to enable this school board and the school administration, Lord, to make the decisions that are best for families reserved. We'd like to thank you, Lord, for all the success we've had, the opportunity you've given us to work with students. Where we ask that you protect and guide each of these students through school youth and this little life, Lord. We thank you for our country, Lord, your son, Jesus Christ, and the love and saving grace that you've given us in your able name and prayer. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Baker, for the good prayer. I'll start by reading the mission statement. The mission of Jenkins Independent Schools is to encourage our students to do their best and engage them in the educational process so that they can excel to their fullest potential. And we have a young man here to lead us in the pledge. Jackson Johnson. Jackson is a second grader at Bird Eye and usually Ms. Atkins introduces him, but she's got a sick baby, so she is out today. But I know Jackson because he's in my daughter's class, and he is a fine young man and a really good student. I'm going to assume that you were here because you had a positive office referral already this year, which is, which is great, and we're real proud of you for that, and thank you. Thank his mommy for bringing him to lead us in the pledge. So Jackson, if you would, come up front and hold his hand and follow along with him.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stay right there. Let us present you with the certificate to thank you for leading us in the pledge today. Turn it around there so you can see it. There we go.
Got you, buddy.
Thank you, buddy. Again, thank you very much, and Mom, thank you for bringing him.
She knows she don't have to stay.
So let's excuse Sarah.
I make a motion to excuse Sarah.
Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
All in favor?
Okay.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mom. Staff, student, school staff. I'll turn this over to our technology director, Brandon Stewart. Let him introduce the young lady we have here with us this evening.
For three years I've been here, we've had, it's been going on since 2022. Okay. So we've had apprentices that have been able to help us in the technology department, and this year with schools starting back, we put an extra amount of work on them this year so that we'd be ready, and we beat Mr. Johnson, director, by having Chromebooks out before he ever could perhaps.
That's true.
And so we wanted to recognize them. We've got two there sick, Chris Mead, he couldn't be here, and Will Hendrickson, he's been sick. Then we've got LaShawna Hall, who is a volleyball player, and she could not be here because she has a game. Then we've got Chloe Hall that's made it, and then we will not shine the spotlight on her friend, Ashley Fields, because she bailed out on her. So we want to brag about them, about all the work they do, updating computers, getting Chromebooks out to classrooms, any kind of problems that the teachers have. Usually the teachers grab them first because they're in the classrooms, and then they will come to myself or Mr. Lee, but they do a lot of work that a lot of people don't realize. So I just wanted to recognize them or Chloe.
So let me speak a little bit about the apprenticeship program and a little bit about DataSeam and technology here in general. You know, we have about 470 students in this district. We have about 100 staff, and for the longest time, technology was a one-man show, and quickly outgrew me, and it's too much for two people because we have more than a two device per one-student ratio here. And that doesn't even count things like printers, these flat panel screens, all the wireless devices, all the cameras, things like that to plug into the network. So the apprenticeship program through DataSeam takes a huge lift off of our technology staff. So instead of being a staff of two, they're a staff of seven. It gives these students real-world experience, makes them job marketable, and it earns workstations for our district so that not only are they here working and getting paid to do that, they're earning these high-quality Mactoch workstations for our district. And it's been one of the greatest things that we've done. You know, we've partnered with DataSeam, and DataSeam has been one of our best partners for, gosh, 15 years or more, and it's helped keep us on the cutting edge of technology across the state. And just wanted to recognize these, these young apprentices and give them their props for what they do. Like you said, trying to get out 450 devices used to take two months. Well, they got it done in the second week of school because of the help of the apprentices. We've already completed map testing and mastery prep testing at the middle-high level, and they're doing it this week at the elementary level earlier than we've ever done it because of the work they've done to get those workstations out. And DataSeam also gives out a work scholarship for the apprentice across the state who puts in the most hours, and we've got it the last two years. So they're, they're saying that we want to continue that, and they want, we've got a couple that's really going for that, try to put in the hours to earn that scholarship as well. So Chloe, thank you very much for coming, and thank you for the work that you do every day to help them out and support the students and the staff here. We recognize it, and we appreciate it. You got a speech you want to give? All right. Moving on to superintendent, board member communications. So we did my evaluation last month, so we're supposed to share that in a public board meeting this month. So Charlotte, why don't you take that away?
The Jenkins Independent Board of Education conducted our annual superintendent evaluation during the executive session of the regularly scheduled July 22nd, 2025 meeting. Superintendent Damian Johnson's results are as follows. Standard one, strategic leadership. Superintendent Johnson was rated as exemplary on this standard based on his commitment to and accomplishments in making sure Jenkins Independent students are prepared and proficient in all aspects of career and/or college readiness while staying aligned with our district's mission and vision commitment to every student. Standard two, instructional leadership. Superintendent Johnson was rated as exemplary on his standard, increasing his 2024 accomplishment rating. This was based on the increase in curriculum-focused education that his leadership team has spearheaded and continued to oversee. This is also reflected in his progressive increase in our district's standardized test scores, establishing JIS as the overall premier school district in our county based on the latest data. Standard three, cultural leadership. Superintendent Johnson was rated exemplary on this standard based on his commitment to broadening the reach of Cavalier success and recognition from county to state to a national level. Whether it is recognition banners for our champions or facility upgrades, including the renovation of our baseball complex, every Cavalier accomplishment has been highlighted on all print and digital platforms. He has facilitated pathways for art exhibitions and instituted a commitment to the production of a theater-driven drama department. His staunch dedication to making sure Cavalier pride is known state and nationwide is unmatched. Standard five, managerial leadership. Superintendent Johnson was rated as accomplished by this standard. This is based on his establishment and oversight of the leadership team to help guide JIS in the direction of our mission and vision. He also faced a unique staffing situation with restructuring of the district's finance department while maintaining continuity and confidence within our district's Cavalier family. Superintendent Damian Johnson was given an overall rating of exemplary for the 2025 evaluation. We, as a board, are thankful for his commitment to the students and staff of Jenkins Independent Schools and look forward to what our future holds. It is a great time to be a Cavalier.
So in that, you guys, first, thank you so much for, for that evaluation, but also it couldn't happen without your support. I tell everybody all the time about the best board in the state are the easiest, they just help me, they support me, they lift me up. And in this, mentioned several times, my leadership team, that's their rating. You know, all I do is point to direction and listen to a bunch of smart people and give them the authority that goes along with responsibility to help make this place the best it can be. And so this exemplary rating goes out to them as well because they do the work every single day, and so I'm humbled. Thank you all very much. Well, we thank you for all your hard work.
Absolutely.
All right. You can take it and turn that one. That's all. All right. We need approval. Everybody's had a moment to look over. If I spot some meeting minutes, if we have, do we have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
We have a second?
A second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Do we have any visitor comments, questions, or concerns? Financial reports.
Good evening. How are you guys? I spent this last month mostly playing catch-up from the wonderful end-of-year activities that came with the finance department. I do see light at the end of the tunnel. Pretty sure it's not a train, so I think we're okay. I will be focusing on continuing to catch up on my regular day-to-day and monthly activities. Got to get started on our working budget. It's due in the October board meeting, I believe, so I'd like to get a head start on it. Aside from that, that seems like where my focus is going to be, making sure that we get all of our tax information into the state like we're supposed to. We are sitting at just over 1.8 million in the bank. That's all I got. You guys got any questions?
No. Thank you, Chris. We need approval. Do we have a motion to approve the financial?
I make a motion to approve the financial report.
We have a second?
I'll say it.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Superintendent personnel report. As presented, it's a lock this summer, but I think we've got, made some good hires, have a really strong staff. We'll be doing some walkthroughs next week. Buildings and grounds reports. All right. Real quickly, our goal for some of that. Talk to the guys, some things they accomplished this month, getting our field ready for soccer so we have our first soccer game. The uniforms are late. We're waiting on those uniforms, but we're, they supposed to be here this week. How many kids are there? I'm not real sure. Have to have a team, is what I know, but I talked to Ethan a little bit about it today, and we're looking at trying to push it to the middle-school, Pee-wee level in the spring, probably, to see if we can get something going here. The playground at Bird Eye is a big thing. It is done with the exception of the mulch, and the holdup on that speed, I'm trying to get them to approve a permanent board rubber surface rather than just the chrome board. So that if this, God forbid, were to happen again, we'll have to replace it, and I believe that's going to happen, but the wheels start turning slow, and soon as that happens, I get beat up by my own wife all the time on the playground. We need, we need to have that ready for our kids. They use the basketball court, but we want to get them back on the, on the playground itself, and you know, we've got some new additions out there that they can't play with yet. So we're trying really hard to get that done. Started construction today on a room on the stage with a grand piano. We're going to try to incorporate that into like a prop for the, for the drama where it looks like a house and looks real nice, so we've been working on that. And a big one that I'm excited about is doing Vermillion's art class, is working on that little classroom. You know, we had some new furniture put in out there, and she's working on some designs and the fences and some landscaping, and when it's done, it'll be nice, nice. I can't wait to show it off. That's it. Principal program director reports. Kirshner, Ms. Atkins.
Yes. Hello. As Mr. Johnson said, Ms. Atkins is out with a sick baby, so I'll just kind of combine mine and hers, too. It's been extremely busy time, just getting everything underway. A lot of training's completed first of the year, trainings and special developments and all that, but it's been really good. 209 students enrolled at Bird Eye. Just made some adjustments to our schedules. You know, we have a plan starting out, and then once you get everybody here, you might have to make some minor adjustments.
I think that's up about 15, would you say, Mr. Baker? Something like that at the elementary school? 15 or 20, probably. 39 in this district.
We got several new teachers, and Mr. Johnson was on the report a while ago. You know, I found the application pool was not really, not a lot, but I think overall we've made some pretty great hires here this year. First impressions, they had great interviews, and now we've seen them in action for a couple weeks, getting good reports from students, things that we see out of them, we've got some really talented new teachers and staff. So with that comes the certified evaluations. Bird Eye, they've only got four this year. I've got about 14 up here, but the new ones and the tenured teachers, it's their year to be evaluated, but Ms. Atkins is going to help share the load, thankfully. Even though it's a necessary thing, it's always good to get in the classroom, kind of let them chill out, chill off what they can do, and I'm looking forward to that. With the new teachers, we're lining up some mentors. We've had a few up here that's already attended training. Looks like Ms. Atkins has some virtual training for those mentors so they can get in the classrooms and give them that, that help to that level. Full preschool this year. I think Bird Eye has finished with their map testing, and I know we're, we're finished up here, starting to get that data in, make our grouping so we can start our RTI, start working with those kids, get them more prepared for state testing, give them a more successful year. Grandparents today for September field. Both campuses, we're getting our PLC kicked off, getting our teachers in there and doing some of that work with that data, and start driving the good things going on here at our school. Up here, I know we've made some changes after our morning entry. We're basically doing the middle-to-take teen ones as they come in, and we were concerned how that would go, but so far it's went really well. Students are receptive. I think it makes your school a safer place. We've got a place to put larger items, so they're not everybody in the cafeteria and with those band instruments and sports equipment, all that, those type of things, so it's going really well. Staff's been really good to come out and help make that process as smooth as possible. But other than that, things are, it's busy, but good. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Thank you very much. I think it's been a really strong start because of pre-planning and being ready. Mr. Baker?
That's not short and sweet. So we have 452 students enrolled, and there is 39 more students than we finished last year. We have 94.48% attendance so far, and our drills, bus evacuations completed, and student transportation code is updated so we can get that done. Is it? Questions?
Good news. That's, so that's, that number is without preschool, so there's 20 more down preschool. Curriculum instruction, I'll share that. We, we try to make sure that every new teacher has a mentor, somebody they can go to for their, Brandon, will you get that, please? Patrick got covered up there. Somebody they can go to for the first line of support, and so set that up and planning new teacher training. We try to have a, at least once a month, a new teacher training. This is teaching 101 stuff and some information on the way we do things here so that they're prepared. Make mention certified evaluation training for teachers, and we're also, like I mentioned earlier, getting ready to start just administrative classroom walkthroughs to do some observations and see how things are going, setting our PLC and MTSS agendas for middle and high school, PLC tomorrow and at elementary school. And we have a one-goal meeting, which is a lot of graduation, pro-secondary trackings set for September 4th. All right. Stewart?
All right. So again, first thing, just the biggest project for starting the school year was Chromebooks, so the apprentices knocked that out. We got staff Chromebooks passed out to the new teachers, so they've got their own personal devices.
Guys, that's a huge job, by the way. That's, you know, 470-some student devices plus the staff devices to get out in the first week and a half. That's pretty amazing.
The thing they were talking about earlier, middle school started last week with map testing. They already finished it. High school is finishing up mastery prep. I think, out of the high school, I think we have just less than 20 that still need to complete it, so Mr. Isaac is working with them to finish that. Bird Eye, Mr. Box said that they finished up, so I think just maybe makeups is what they're finishing this week, so we've got all that knocked out of the way. Attended the erratic meeting in Pikeville. We discussed upcoming statewide projects that'll be going on. Biggest thing that we've had is troubleshooting and fixing student and staff logins for new students, getting those accounts created so that way they can just get into their programs that they need. Mr. Isaac, the MTSS coordinator, has been working with gathering data from math and mastery prep, and he's already working with teachers to document the progress monitoring and discuss interventions with those kids after they take it. Mr. Lee, the DLC, has been working with newer teachers and getting them familiar with our educational platforms and our apps that we use so that way they are caught up. And then we have ordered new phones for our classrooms. We had some new teachers that were needing phones, so we got those ordered. And that is it for technology. Any questions?
Thank you very much. So I keep them busy. Thanks for the hard work. Samantha.
All right. So ESA's confirmation and data has been submitted, along with our daytime waiver and continuation submitted, and the projection report to KDE Title III intent to participate been submitted. I went to Frankfurt to a deck, training, new deck training, and I'm scheduled to go to Scott Tringle Conference in October, and we have met with Head Start and submitted the MOA agreement with them to Sherpoint. And I'm working on my consolidated plan right now, so that'll be finished by next month. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Thank you, Miss Hannah. Got everybody? That's it. Moving on. Approved contract for school pitchers for fiscal year 26. So we've only had one submission this year. It was from Photo Genius. We have worked with them in the past, so fine with continuing with them, getting, getting started. Do we have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve contract for school pitchers.
We have a second?
I'll say it.
I'll say it. All right.
Too late, Patrick.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Approved emergency certificate for teachers for fiscal year 26. So we've got two this year that are in the process of getting these certifications, but you guys will, well, where Sherry officially retired, which broke my heart, but Amy McDougall has replaced her, and so she is in the process of getting her notice certification that's taking the classes, but she's emergency certified, and then I think Electric County's numbers must be up because we're not getting any contract with them this year for vision and hearing, so we're a Braden Sheldon special ed teacher here, has agreed to take classes to be, to do the vision impairment, so we're going to do it in-house this year. So, and we're working on the others, but Ms. McDougall's done a phenomenal job thus far. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the emergency certification for teachers for FY '26.
Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Approved tax rates. Come down, and compensating rate's a little lower this year, so I, my suggestion is that we would take the compensating, which is 86. Personal property, 98.5. Motor vehicle, watercraft, aircraft, 69, utility, 3. Do we have a motion to approve tax rates?
I make a motion to approve the tax rate.
We have a second?
I'll say it.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Approved out-of-state overnight trip. It's all our fall and winter sports, so there, bunch of them in Virginia, a couple in, maybe just one in Tennessee at Kingsport, and then I think the boys' basketball has a overnight on Christmas break, and the cross-country is racing Louisville. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve it.
Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Approved creation of coaching position. So right, we've never had middle school cross-country, but right now we have enough for a cross-country middle school team. Those kids are currently practicing with the high school, but you know, if we have enough interest, I don't want to offer anything the kids have an interest in, so I'd like to ask the board to create that coaching position at stock of $1,000. Do we have a motion to approve, uh, coaching position?
I make a motion we create the coaching position.
Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Approved AESA sub-agreement for gear up for fiscal year 26. That's our yearly gear up agreement. AESA is PRI, basically, you know, they're over gear up, that's our standard gear up agreement, no, no changes. Just keep some money flowing. Do we have a motion to approve?
I make a motion we approve the AESA sub-agreement for gear up.
Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Approved surplus items. So you, as you see at this library, we've been blessed to, through the grant, to be able to do a major upgrade in here and in a classroom as well, and we should have some more classrooms coming, so there'll be some more, but with that, we've got tables and chairs and desks that we no longer need, some of which need to be disposed of, some we'd like to pass along to somebody that can use them. Do we have a motion to approve surplus items?
I make a motion to approve getting rid of our surplus items.
Do we have a second?
A second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Does anyone have a need for executive session? I do not. No need? Other board of business? Our AE contract with Electric County came in today, so I- Our AE contract with Electric County came in today, so I'd like to get that approved.
Do we have a motion for the, what'd you say, AD?
Alternative education contract with Electric. Yeah, AE.
AE. Do we have a motion to approve AE contract?
I make a motion to approve it.
Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
I make a motion adjourned.
Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
All right.
Motion carries.
Not short and sweet. Thank you all.